Okay, good evening. This is the Tuesday, August 28th, 2018 Board Meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:00 for the reasons of collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, litigation when an action against, affecting, or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds it an action is probable or imminent, in which case the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. And last, the discussion of meetings, minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06. And with that, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin with public comments. We have one person on the list, Peter Giraldi. We ask that you speak for up to three, come on up to the microphone, up to three minutes to speak.
To the board members, last week you were successful in putting your master facilities plan onto the November ballot. My question to this board is, when are you going to stop misleading the public? I attended the May 14th presentation at Conrad Fisher where you identified the eight options and the costs associated with those eight options. These options range from taking no action and because of a bond retiring in 2019, we would potentially see a reduction in taxes of approximately $800 to the $168.5 million option that you would say increased our taxes by $149. When one board member, I believe it was Mr. McDonough, states that you would increase our taxes by $150, he seems to have taken everything into account. But when another member, I believe it was Mr. Collins, indicates that that $150 refers to a $500,000 home and states that it would be doubled for a million dollar home, he did not mention that that doubled amount does not refer to that $150 but that $949 difference between the $800 reduction and the $150 increase. When will we see these new taxes? You stated that $25 million bond would be issued in 2019, a $50 million bond would be issued in 2021, and another $93 million bond would be issued in 2023. Will these taxes be implemented in increments, or will we see an immediate increase based on the entire $168.5 million? My next question is, what makes you think that your current estimates are any more accurate than your estimates from previous years? Do we have to be reminded of the board that promised us, that gave us their word that the 1986 York High School swimming pool would cost no more than $2 million and it turned out to cost $3.8 million? Using those same numbers, your numbers, those taxes on that $500,000 home would be increased not by $149 but by over $1,000. What happens when the budget is exceeded? What happens when the taxes are increased? We have no recourse. So let me develop a hypothetical proposal, that any funds that are needed in excess of a proposed budget be paid solely by the members of this board. As absurd as that sounds and as comical as that sounds, that's exactly what you're asking us to do. My final question is, when are you going to stop treating us like a source for unlimited funds?
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move to approval of board meeting minutes. Motion to approve. Okay. So we will then move to approve. We approve mended minutes, May 21st, 2018, July 17, 2018, July 25th, 2018, August 8, 2018, August 14, 2018, August 17, 2018, and August 20, 2018 minutes. If there are no changes, those stand as presented. Okay, then we will also approve July 17, 2018, July 25, 2018, August 8, 2018, August 14, 2018, August 17, 2018, and August 20, 2018, closed session minutes. If there are no changes, they will stand as presented. Okay. All right, superintendent's consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to remove item F. I think one item F. Yes, one item F.
All right, you're removing item F. Any other items being removed? Okay, so then I need a motion for the other items.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda items A through H except for F.
She said you had to read them all damn thing. Every single one of them.
Okay.
Yeah, a closed session, you've got to read them.
You've got to read every single one, Dave. That's why nobody's jumping in to do it.
You're talking about consent agenda. I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, item A, I get a great, this is a fishing government. A, personnel report. B, financial report. C, approval to extend the contract with EZ Tech Connect for services of interim technology manager. D, approval of policy reference education subscription service, press policy manual updates. Section four, operational services, first reading. Item E, approval of policy reference education subscription service, press policy manual updates. Section five, personnel, first reading. Skipping F. G, approval of policy reference education subscription service, press policy manual updates. Section seven, students, first reading. H, approval of new policy number six, colon, 135 accelerated placement program, first reading.
I second. Motion made by Chris, second by Karen. Discussion? All right. Go ahead.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's, the motion passes. All right, do I have a motion for item F?
I move that the Board of Education accept as a first reading revisions to policies six, colon, 60 curriculum content, six, colon, 80 teaching about controversial issues, six, colon, 120 education of children with disabilities, six, colon, 210 instructional materials, six, colon, 240 field trips, six, colon, 250 community resource persons and volunteers. Which will become effective at the time of their adoption and subsequently be added to the policy manual of the Board of Education, section six, instruction. This is different than as published. I excluded six, colon, 310 credit for alternative courses and programs and course substitutions, which is not quite ready yet.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's, motion passes.
Mr. Collins?
All right, given that we did not have the opportunity to have any discussion, so what happens to six, colon, 310?
It's going to go back to the committee.
Yeah, what to do?
Why is that?
I think we're going to give the administration a little bit of time to talk over with the high school administration in terms of how to implement this.
We, we need to, I need to talk with the high school administration. This was not something that we were necessarily anticipating and so I just want to make sure that the policy committee has the information on the space considerations that we would have to take into account for, you know, putting kids into extra study halls and some of those different kinds of logistical things. I don't think it's a big issue to work through, but, but they were not anticipating this and so I want to make sure that they have a chance to think about it and be able to inform the board of what, what that would look like if, if we moved in that direction.
When would we anticipate this coming back to the board?
I have to set up a meeting with them and I think that it can come back to the board probably within a couple of months. We just need to schedule another policy committee meeting. I just need for them to take a look at the space in the building and some of the ways that they would manage the, the extra number of students that would need to be housed in different spaces around the building. I just didn't want the board to get into a situation where it passed something and the public was expecting something and then we found out that the high school wasn't going to be able to accommodate, accommodate that.
Can we have some kind of assurance that this will come back this semester in order to be able to be implemented next semester?
I can tell you that it could, that we will for sure have something that could be implemented next year with the master schedule already built. I'm not 100% sure what they would have to do to, what adjustments they would have to make to account for the, the number of students. I don't, I don't know, I'm not trying to speak on behalf of the high school administration. On behalf of the district office administration, there's no philosophical objection to any of this or concern about the rationale of the committee for wanting to move this forward. I just, the, the high school administration reached out to me and was not prepared for this and I wanted to make sure that they just had some time to be able to plan for, for the logistical considerations. It could be possible that second semester is possible. I just, I can't, I'd hate to make that statement without being able to support it.
Just want to make sure this doesn't get lost.
I think that my understanding for the read of the board is that the majority of the board agrees with you and it's not my intent to try to move in a different direction from what you're looking to do. I just feel that it's important to give the high school the opportunity to figure out what it needs to do to make it work.
Yeah. I'm sorry, if I could also add here, I am not suggesting that it get lost, but if we're going to implement something, I want to make sure we understand the implications and I don't think we've had discussed what those implications are. So I am in favor of waiting to hear from the high school on what this would look like and the impact of it.
Anybody else? John?
I just was procedurally, what does the board want to do? You want to take that input from the high school and go back to committee, or do you want to bring it here? I think the three committee members were pretty much in agreement that this thing should go forward, it's just a matter of how and when. So where should that discussion happen? Here or in committee?
My opinion is to bring it back to the board for first reading.
In my opinion, it would be go back to the policy committee. So the policy, the committee is split.
Would like to see it at the board table.
I agree with that.
I'd like it to move forward and we can talk about it as a board.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about it as a board. I think, yeah, I think it's good for kids, so seeing how we can, you know, make sure it works right, I guess, but, yeah.
Then the recommendation of the committee stands and we'll bring it whenever we're ready to discuss it.
So let me get some communication to you so that you have some idea when that is so that you can get some assurances that it is not going to be delayed indefinitely. I'll give you an example, right now, the way they schedule study halls, they have a lot of smaller study halls. They would probably have to relocate spaces to have larger study halls and then do pull out services in different ways and things like that. So I, it's not that, it's not that, I don't want people to think that, that we're looking for ways to try to go against, you know, what the committee is recommending. In fact, you know, I can say that we're comfortable trying to make it work. I just want to make sure that if we're going to give families the belief that they're going to be able to have this option, I want to make sure that, that the high school has given enough thought that they can manage the process.
Okay, anything else? Okay. Next is superintendent's agenda action items, approval of settlement agreement with the Elmhurst Teachers Council.
Okay, this item relates to a grievance that was filed last year and it had to do with duties and expectations of team leaders at the middle school and we have a settlement that addresses that, that is agreeable to the union and the administration. So that, that is what we're asking for approval of. We had, this, this is not a new item, this is a lingering item where the, the terms have finally been, you know, put into writing to where we can act.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the settlement agreement with the Elmhurst Teachers Council.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just want to thank the administration for coming to the terms of an agreement. So thanks, I knew it took a lot of time.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's, the motion passes.
All right, next item on the agenda is approval to display resources to be used in conjunction with implementation of Aaron's Law Instruction at the third to fourth grade level for the 2018-2019 school year.
So our previous model involved bringing outside speakers in to address this, which disrupted class and was expensive and so there were, the, the student services, people looked into some different ways that we could meet this requirement. And the reason that this is coming to you off cycle, because we typically try to bring the resources to you in April, is because the work was, it was summer work that was paid for. And so in order to be able to implement this fall, we would like to be able to get the resources on display so that we can move forward. If you have additional questions, Kathy can, can address any of those.
First, I have a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the public display of the proposed grades three through four, Aaron's Law curriculum resource.
I second.
A motion by Shannon, second by Margaret. Any discussion?
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's, the motion passes. All right, next item is approval of donations to York Field and Edison.
So the donation at York is from Guaranteed Rate in Elmhurst for inflatable noise makers and mini footballs, totaled, in total of $1,494.31. These are for fun at home football games. The, let's call it that. The second donation by the Field PTA is $7,000 for a projector in the Field Auditorium. This is something that depending on, on any future facility changes, has been run through technology so that it can be redeployed. And this would allow with, whether it's teaching spaces or presentations or whatever the case may be. And then the second donation at Field is $4,000 for various staff requests that have to do with instructional resources. And then Edison is a donation of $2,050 for the Staff Lounge. This is by the Edison PTA. We are getting, our, our new Director of Facilities, Todd Schmidt, is looking into getting some standardized types of guidelines for different grade levels and different spaces around the district for furniture donations. And this was something that was a holdover from last spring, so I convinced the PTA to scale back their donations so that the majority of their money would go toward the students in the classroom, but this was something that they felt they wanted to do to enhance the environment at the school. And so I allowed them to bring it forward, premature to the development of the full proposal that we expect to come later this fall with, you know, furniture guidelines.
Okay, motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of the donation to York High School from Guaranteed Rate in the amount of $1,494.31 for items for football games, the donation to Field Elementary School from the PTA in the amount of $11,000 for projector for the auditorium and items to support staff requests, and the donation to Edison Elementary School from the PTA in the amount of $2,050 to renovate the Edison Staff Lounge. These donations are accepted in accordance with Policy 8, colon, 80 Gifts to the District.
I'll second.
Discussion? John?
I just want to be clear that the only thing here that would significantly raise the question of equity, and we found out that our community really values equity, would be the issue of this projector. I assume that there are equal facilities at all our schools to assure the same learning environment exists in all our buildings.
Yes, all the teaching spaces are different, so that's kind of a unique space at Field, but Dave, if you want to comment on that a little bit, certainly feel free.
Honestly, I don't know how many elementary schools have auditoriums. I know that for Field, they had challenges with presentations and where to put the equipment in order to do presentations in the auditorium, so this is where the PTA donation comes from. So I honestly would have to go around and look, but, but for sure, not every elementary has an auditorium, so there's a disparity there or inequity there. And where there is an auditorium, I'd have to check to see the status of the projectors.
I just want to make sure, we do accept this gift in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District. Inequity is a, a strong value of the community and it's a strong value of the board and it's a very strong value of the administration. We know every time we ask, we are reminded of, of how much we're committed to equity. So I just want to make sure that when we accept these gifts in this way, we are not creating a disparate facility situation and I'm just looking for some assurance from, that that is the case.
Well, all of the, all of the, you know, based on their actual spaces, all of the elementary schools have the ability to project and, and present for various different audiences. I think, you know, that one of the things with our master facilities plan is Dave is looking to replace these systems and, and to go to more flat screen displays and some of these other things and get away from the wall mounted things when we have a chance to get on a replacement cycle. So many of our schools have older equipment, but all have the ability to display and present. I think that this is something that's designed more uniquely for that particular space because they've had trouble in the past being able to accommodate parent nights and other things like that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Chris?
I think we owe thank you to the PTAs, the very generous PTAs in these schools for their help in raising the money and making those donations, so special thank you to you.
As, as well as a thank you to Guaranteed Rate because I think anybody that can add a little fun to high school deserves a big thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Seven i's, no n's, the motion passes. All right, superintendent's communication, Freedom of Information Act request.
Seven Freedom of Information Act requests were received, two requesting information at the, on the Open Meetings Act, which were granted, one requesting specific employee information, which was granted, one requesting employment information, which was granted, one requesting specific student data, which was granted, one requesting specific email correspondence, which was granted, one requesting purchasing records, which was granted. The second item I have is that we have, I've talked about before, our Twitter The second item I have is that we have, I've talked about before, our Twitter hashtag, hashtag igniteD205, and so our schools, we have, last year we started that, and actually our communications department was recognized for our efforts with social media in that regard recently, so kudos to you. But we, I know Kara is following us, and we have the opportunity for the people around the district who have Twitter handles to post all of the things at all of their schools under that hashtag, so if you don't follow a particular school where your kids are, you could still go there and see a lot of different neat things that are happening around the district, and they post a lot of fun things that they're doing with students. And so what we wanted to do at the end of meetings, just to kind of have a good news little fun session, is to have a tweet of the week, and so our tweet of the week this week is now displayed. And so this comes from Susan Stevenson, and she is our new librarian at Sandberg, and she's going crazy with a Makerspace over there and is adding all different kinds of enthusiasm and fun to the library at Sandberg. I met her in some of our walkthroughs, as did Kara, very energetic, and so the communications department is in charge of this, so I take no, you know, if people want to complain that their tweet was better or whatever, I'm out of it, just so everybody knows. Somebody else can get blamed. But anyway, so that's our tweet of the week, and so we'll do that at the end of every board meeting, just try to have some fun and see some student faces.
Board communications?
Just one communication. There was information sent out to the board recently on the school liaison program, and for those who aren't familiar with the school liaison program, each board member is assigned to two schools, and what this school liaison program is, it's a way to facilitate a deeper connection to the community. Each school and each liaison, the process will look slightly different, but what it will include is typically a visit to the school and/or a visit with the PTA slash community. So that's just a general FYI, that that is a program that is in existence and has been in existence throughout the district.
Thanks, Margaret. Anything else?
Okay, we have four upcoming meetings scheduled. Tuesday, September 11, 2018 is our regular Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here. Tuesday, September 25 is regularly scheduled board meeting at 7:30 here in District 205 Center. Monday, October 1 is a finance committee meeting that will be at 6:30, District 205 Center in Room 217. And finally, Tuesday, October 9 is our regular Board of Education meeting at 7:30 here in District 205 Center. And if there is nothing else, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.